Okay. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our public meeting of planning for -- are we doing -- yeah, we have planning -- Monday, March 27th at 5:30. Are there any disclosure or conflict of interest? Seeing none, motion to accept the agenda. Counselor Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Martin, that the Council of the Township of North Lengere accepts the public meeting of planning, agenda for Monday, March 27th, 2023.
Thank you, Counselor. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. None opposed. Ratify the minutes. Counselor Madden.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Cadell, that the Council of the Township of North Lengere accepts the minutes of the public meeting of planning of Monday, January 30th, 2023.
Thank you. Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor? Motion is carried. None opposed. Moving on to zoning amendments, Z-03 2023. Welcome, Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this evening, what we have are three zoning bylaw amendments, so there will be no voting, and all three will be brought to the next council meeting. First one is Z-03 2023. The owner for this one is Mike Ray. Address is 21520 Lagan Glen El Grove, which is also County Road 24. So right here, you see the -- it's pretty much in between Dalkeeth and Glen Sandfield on the west side, so right on the county road. The official plan designation for that property is agricultural resource lands, and as you can see on my official plan map that we have here, it's pretty much surrounded by it as well. Same thing for our zoning bylaw. Designation in the zoning is general agricultural, and also again surrounded by general ag, which follows the OP. The purpose for this application is your typical surplus dwelling for new lot creation. So you have the conditions four and five on the severance application, B-8522. So we're rezoning the retained portion to prohibit residential development. So the retained portion, in this case, is the large farming, the fields. And we're rezoning the severed portion, so the smaller newly created property, to prohibit agricultural use and to acknowledge the minimum lot frontage from 200 meters to the proposed 39 meters because it's the driveway width at the roadway, at the county road. So that's the view from the entire property. So as you can see, it's kind of a flag lot, but it's a little bit wider. It's not just a driveway. It's a little bit wider at the road, and it keeps 39 meters right down to where the dwelling is. A little close up right here. So the dwelling and the attached garage, of course, are going to remain on the residential newly created property. And both buildings that you see, so the run on your right-hand side, the cover building, the coverall building, and the old barn on the left side, will remain on the agricultural property. So the pink property is, in this case, is the residential property. The lines are not exactly at the right spot. So both buildings are compliant with the zoning bylaw for setback. So there's at least nine meters from the buildings to the property line. But if you look at the survey that I have right here, I believe, so the survey shows a little bit more. So you have 14 meters from the building to the property line, and the property lines that you see there are actually following the wood fence. So what they have done, you see the wood fence are a little bit off, so the pink square is supposed to be right on the fence lines. So that's the new property. These are just, like as I say often, these are just for information purposes. They're not exact, but it's kind of the shape of the severance, but it'll actually follow all the wood fence. So that's why it's got that shape, just to follow the lines. There is enough room on the residential property to accommodate for the septic system and well, so that's all remaining with the dwelling, of course. So land area is total, what, total 106 acres. We're severing off 3.53 for the residential property. So in this case, the owner is keeping the agricultural land in the two buildings. For the severance, there's currently only one entrance. So I don't know if I have it. No, I don't. So there's one entrance, which is the driveway for the residential dwelling, and the counties have submitted a comment saying that they are not going to allow another entrance. It's their road. It's County Road 24. So there's only one entrance for the dwelling. The fields can be accessed either from that entrance or from neighboring fields on either side. So it's not really an issue for the owner to have that one.
So there's going to be a right-of-way?
There's not going to be a legal right-of-way because he's most likely going to use other fields to access the property. But like, it wasn't an issue for them, even though the counties have said that they're not going to use the driveway.
So what happens in the future if they want to sell that property? They have no access?
Mike would just have to use the existing, the other fields to access. If they would prevent him entrance on the driveway, they technically could. So Mike didn't. There's no right-of-way applied on the property whatsoever. Besides that, we also have received a comment from RRCA for the map-to-water course, so there's a drain on the property. Basically, in this case, it's just if they want to alter the drain, they would have to notify RRCA. There's no intentions of doing that. So that's the survey. As you can see, the septic system's on the right of the house. There's lots of room. And the two buildings, so a couple pictures. So the building that you see on the right-hand side is the old barn, which, so you see the house, it's not very clear, sorry. You see the house on the left, and the other building on the right, property line will follow that fence that you see there. And on the other side, so that's the tarp building, the coverall building, that's also remaining with the agricultural property. And this, as you know, so Planning Act permits bylaw, permits council to pass bylaws. The PPS and the official plan permits these types of severances if you allow for enough room for the dwelling and for septic system and well. In this case, that's a typical severance for surplus dwelling. And in conclusion, based on criteria above, proposed zoning amendment conforms to policies of the SDG official plan, and it's consistent with PPS, and it's compliant with our zoning bylaw. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Jacob. Question, and this is just curiosity. Did the counties want to separate those two buildings, or did the owner actually want to keep them?
The owner wanted to keep them. Yeah, it was not an issue. Yeah, yeah.
They do that, and the building never gets used because nobody can access it. So, okay.
Well, no, in this case, it's all--
It's all good.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further questions or comments on this file? I'll ask the clerk, CAO.
Does anyone wish to speak in favor or against the application this evening? Second time, does anyone wish to speak in favor or against the application this evening? And a third and final time.
Thank you. So we'll move on if there are no other comments. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to Z-04 2023. Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For this one, the owner, the owner, sorry, Chafan Brody. The address is 21955 Brody Road in Dalkeeth. So it's very close to the other one. As you can see, it's on the corner of County Road 23 and Brody Road, so it's on the northeast corner. It's right in between Dalkeeth and Glen Sandfield. The official plan for that one, again, agricultural resource lands and surrounded by ag lands as well. Same thing for our zoning layer, so it's agricultural, general agricultural all around. In this case, pretty much the same thing. So here, consent application, B-84-22. We're rezoning the retained portion of the field. So again, the fields prohibit residential development, and we're rezoning the severed portion to prohibit agricultural use. So in this case, both properties are completely compliant with our zoning bylaw, so that's the only, we're only applying these two zonings. Overall view of the property, again, here, a little zoom in. So in this case as well, there was talks of demolishing the building that you see just north of the property line. The owners have decided to keep the building there, too. So here either, it's not a problem. And again, these lines are not really accurate. I think we have the survey, yeah, right here. So what they did is when the surveyor was there, they ensured that the building was at least nine meter from that property line, so it's compliant with the zoning. So this is what it's actually going to look like. There's nine meters between the building and the property line, so these are just approximate, so they're not exact. But basically, the detached garage and the dwelling and the septic system are going to remain on the 2.56 acre of deemed surplus to the farming operation. Here again, there's a, wait, I'm sorry, sorry. Here, there's two existing entrances. So there's one serving the dwelling and the accessory storage building, and there's another one just east of the new dwelling, so I don't know. So basically, just on the right-hand side of that little tree line that you see there, there's another entrance to access the fields. So in this case, there's an entrance for each property. The counties have submitted a comment saying that they will not allow for an entrance all along the County Road 23, but it's not a problem because there's, both entrances are off Brody Road, which is our road, so that's all okay. And again, here, there's a drain on the property, so recent region have said that if they alter the drain, they have to submit an application. And basically, that's a little picture of the property. So the building on the left-hand side is the garage that's going to remain with the house, and the building that you see far back is the building that's going to stay with the agricultural property. Here again, same thing, permitted as per Planning Act, PPS, and official plan, and same conclusion, so everything is consistent with PPS, the official plan, and with our zoning bylaw. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Jacob. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk.
Does anyone wish to speak in favor or against the application this evening? Second time, does anyone wish to speak in favor or against the application this evening? And a third and final time.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to Z-05 2023. Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The owner for this zoning bylaw amendment, Sylvain Lupien. The location, 2915 Lockenvar Road in Dalkeeth. So as you can see right there, it's close to the corner of County Road 34 in Lockenvar. So it's just right up there in the north, close to the 417. Official plan designation, again here, agricultural resource lands. And our zoning designation, agricultural also. So on this map, you see that there's, it's the Regal River. That's just across the road. You'll see that recent region submitted comments, but there's, like, the river doesn't, it's within the 120 meters of that property, but it doesn't affect the new zoning bylaw because there's lots of room on the property. So just checking that. So the purpose for this application, to rezon the property from general agricultural to general agricultural, special exception, AD 226, to permit a secondary dwelling on the property. So that's a little overview of the property. So the existing dwelling is what you see on the right-hand side of the property, where you have the civic number. And where I put the yellow box is an approximate location of where they intend to put the secondary home. Then again, we're rezoning the entire property, so that purple box that you see there is what we're rezoning. So if they would decide to put the house elsewhere, they could, but the intention for now is to put it there. There's most likely going to be secondary septic system, sorry, and they may use the existing well. Both services are going to be private. There's only one entrance, and the intention is to keep it only as one entrance like that to access both dwellings. We could issue a different civic number, even though there's only one entrance, but right now, the plan is to only keep this like that. So the property is 4.87 acres, so it's well above our minimum in our zoning bylaw, so that's not a problem for space. There's lots of room on the property. Frontage, 237 feet. That is also compliant with our bylaw. So as you know, general ag only permits one dwelling. They want to have another one for a family member, so that's why we're applying this zoning bylaw. In the wooded area, the house will be compliant, so it's not a tiny home or anything. It's just a regular single-family dwelling, approximately 1,200 square feet. Same, again, same driveway. We've received no comments from members of the public around, just that comment from RRCA, because there's a Regal River across the road, and no other comments from any other agencies. So that's a picture of the driveway, I think, yeah. So there you go. So in the woods that you see on the left-hand side is where the house is intended to be constructed, so there's enough room over there to do so. The Planning Act, as you know, our zoning bylaw is in the works of being updated, so this is encouraged by the province, so we're passing zoning bylaws, because at this point, it's not permitted in our zoning bylaw. Provincial policy statement says that it's encouraged, as long as it's consistent with the surroundings and with the other properties. In this case, it is. There's no concern either environmentally or for any applicable laws. SDG official plan also encourages this type of development in the rural area. And yeah, in conclusion, based on the criteria above, proposed zoning amendment conforms to the policies of SDG official plan, consistent with PPS, and compliant with our zoning bylaw. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Jacob. I have one question, just on the, you said probably you'd get, put in a new septic system. Would they not have to have a separate septic system based on the size?
Well, it depends if the, yeah, if the existing septic system is large enough to accommodate the secondary home, they may decide to use the same, just like--
Okay.
--the one we're going to pass later on. They're going to just put in a new tank. In this case, they're expecting that it's going to be too small, so they're going to do a separate septic system, depending on room and whatever. And then they're most likely going to use the same well, though.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Williams, then Counselor Matt?
Well, it's been a long vacation. Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just curious, when our zoning bylaw gets redone, how will secondary residences on one lot be embedded in there?
They will most likely be permitted on all rural and agricultural lands outside of urban suburban area that are large enough. It'll have a sentence, like, as long as it's large enough to accommodate for septic system, for the well, for the secondary home. So if you have a very small lot that can barely accommodate one house, they will not be permitted a secondary home. Then again, they are permitted to have an accessory apartment within that same building, but for secondary homes like that, it'll basically be a blanket rule that applies to all lands that are ag or rural outside of town.
Okay. Thank you. And so we won't be seeing these anymore?
Nope.
Right?
No, council won't be seeing that. No, unless, as I said, there's something different or too small or whatnot, but like, for this one, for example, council would not even be involved in the decision.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Manley.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm meaning to ask this, Jacob, because we've seen a fair number of these now. Are there setback rules for the existing house that's there and where they're going to build a new house? Do we have in our--
Between the buildings, I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's one. It's only four feet, though. So they, yeah, they could technically have the two houses at four feet from each other, but it's like, they still have to comply with the setbacks from interior side and rear. So it's, like, if you're in rural, for example, it's 7.5 from the rear, and I believe it's six from the side, so they have to comply with that. But yeah, between any building for residential use and the township, it's only four feet, 1.2 meters. Most of the people don't want that.
No, I know. I'm just thinking.
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't know. Maybe that's something we should look at in our, can, could we put something in--
Definitely.
--in our, it's just to say that there's a certain amount of space that has to go between the two buildings or the two residents? I don't know.
Does this have something to do with your, rest of your family or something?
No, it's got nothing to do with my family. But no, I just don't think it would be smart to--
Yeah.
I don't know.
I think, though, if that came to us, we could make a, we could make a decision based on, oh, actually, they're not going to come to us after this.
No, when we present the zoning, the comprehensive zoning bylaw, is when these things will be--
Right.
But we'll make note of that. It makes sense to have, like, maybe, respect the same setback as the interior side, and so at least 20 feet between, like, something like that. Why? Why? Definitely.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll ask the CAO.
Does anyone wish to speak in favor or against the application this evening? Second time, does anyone wish to speak in favor or against the application this evening? And a third and final time.
Okay. Thank you. So there is no old business, no new business. Notice a motion is at the call of the chair. Motion to adjourn. Counselor Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Manley. There being no further business to discuss, the public meeting of planning was adjourned at 5:50.
All those in favor? Motion is carried. None opposed. So we will take a 10-minute break and come back for the regular meeting of council. So thank you, everyone.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our meeting of Monday, March 27. Welcome to all members of council, staff, the public, and I'd ask you to please stand for the National Anthem. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none, except the agenda, Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Kaddal, that the council of the township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda of the regular meeting of council on Monday, March 27, 2023.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any questions on the agenda? No additions or deletions? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Moving on to the adoption of the minutes, Councillor Kaddal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Martin, that the minutes of the following meeting be adopted as circulated. Regular meeting of council, March 13, 2023, and committee of the whole meeting, March 22, 2023.
Thank you, councillor. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion is carried, none opposed. And moving on to delegations. With us tonight, Robert Aldrich Hughes, the CAO for Opital Glengarry Memorial Hospital. Welcome, Robert.
Oh, there we go. There it is. It is on. Good evening, everybody. I want to thank you for having me this evening. I'm Rob Aldrich Hughes. I'm the president and CEO of Opital Glengarry Memorial Hospital here in Alexandria. I took on the role of president and CEO approximately 11 months ago, and since arriving at HGMH, we've been focused on many areas, including the health human resources shortages, our strategic planning, and physician recruitment. And these are some of the areas I'd like to speak with you about tonight and provide you a bit of an update. So in terms of our health human resources shortages, it will come as no surprise when I tell you that staffing levels at HGMH were extremely problematic over the summer and the fall of this past year. The pressure stemmed from both permanent and temporary nursing vacancies. As you know, HGMH was placed in the very difficult position to have to temporarily and partially close the emergency department during that problematic timeframe. The team focused on a multi-pronged approach to address the staffing challenges, with a focus to open and maintain 24-hour, seven-day-week consistent emergency department coverage. So as a result of this planning and execution, the hospital has not been required to close the emergency department in five months. So in the last year, the hospital has hired eight registered nurses and eight registered practical nurses. In addition, we've welcomed nurses back from their temporary leaves of absences, such as pregnancy and parental leave. So as a result of that, and some contingency planning on vacant shifts, the hospital's been working closely with nursing staffing agencies to help fill some of those gaps within the shortages of our labor supply. And we use nursing agencies when we cannot fill the shifts with our own staff. And I do want to sincerely thank our staff for stepping up and filling in for the many vacant shifts that they work beyond what their normal schedule would be, because it is absolutely our staff that are able to maintain 24/7 emergency department services at HGMH. We've also hired an additional human resources professional to focus on recruitment and retention at the hospital, while also sponsoring internationally educated nurses to finish their College of Nurses program and then become licensed nurses, and they plan to practice here at HGMH when they are complete. And finally, we've most recently launched our Clinical Extern Program, and this is a program where we welcome nursing students to work within the hospital. They must be in their second year or higher nursing year within their schooling, and they will work on units and gain valuable hospital experience, in the hopes that when they're completed their nursing education, they will then come on board and continue to work with us at HGMH as nursing here in Alexandria. So as we look ahead to the summer, we are cautiously optimistic. The labor supply of nurses continues to be a challenge, but our planning has begun with strong efforts to ensure that we're not placed in the same position as we were in the summer of 2022. Next, I'd like to talk to you a bit about the planning that we've been doing with respect to the hospital's strategic plan. The prior strategic plan was developed for the period of 2018 to 2022. So in the fall of 2022, HGMH began the process of developing our next strategic plan to carry us through the next few years. I think we can all agree that the past few years in healthcare have been particularly challenged, and we don't look the same as we did back in 2018 when that plan was launched, not to mention working through a global pandemic, the health human resources shortages, which we've talked about, but as well as the imperative of diversity, equity, and inclusion in healthcare. So through a significant stakeholder engagement and consultation, HGMH is gearing up to release our strategic plan in early May. This reimagined plan will see a revised mission, vision, and values to help guide where we're going and what the future state of our organization looks like. It supports what our organization will strive to attain over the next few years. It's important to find a vision and values that inspires our people and one that instills confidence in the communities that we serve. We're excited to put the finishing touches on our plan, and we look forward to sharing that with you when we are complete. Next, an area of focus has been on our physician recruitment. Over the last year, we've been successful in the recruitment of five physicians to support hospital care. Of the five physicians, two of those physicians are primary care physicians that have set up practices in our hospital. That's where their offices are, and they have active privileges in supporting our inpatient units. So that's Dr. Pfeffer and Dr. Miller, who joined our hospital. Two other physicians, they are locums, who do not have primary care practices, but they are integral in supporting our inpatient unit. So they have active privileges, locum privileges, at the hospital, and they take care of our inpatients. And then most recently, we've recruited Dr. Gruner to our emergency department. I'd like to say welcome back to Dr. Gruner, because Dr. Gruner did practice in our emergency department eight years ago, and we have welcomed him back into our merge. And finally, I just wanted briefly chat a little bit about our patient and family advisory committee recruitment. So in the coming weeks, our hospital will be seeking additional patients and family members of patients to join our patient and family advisory committee. This is a committee that is integral to our hospital's ability to support care that includes patient and families as partners in care. The opportunity will be posted and communicated broadly, and we look forward to supporting the good work of this group. So unless there's any questions, that would be my delegation.
Great, thank you. Questions or comments? Councillor Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rob, thank you very much. Appreciate the information always.
Absolutely.
I have a couple of questions for you.
For sure.
First one, the pool.
The pool.
What's the plan, and when will it happen?
Okay. So we are gearing up to put water back in the pool in early summer, and that will be a focus on our clinical programs and clinical rehab for our patients who will rehab in the pool. So we have not made the decision to begin back with our community programs that were once were offered and operated. However, we are working closely with the town in the hopes that we'll be able to offer community programs in the pool in the coming future. So our focus as the hospital will be on the clinical programs for rehab, and we'll continue to work and secure partnership, hopefully, with the town for the community programs.
Good, thank you. And I should mention, both of these questions are questions that have been asked of me, and I have to get the info. The amount of money that is recovered by the hospital from the province of Quebec for patients from Quebec that are seen at the hospital, the amount, and also, is it 100% recovery? The question that was asked of me is, are we subsidizing healthcare for Quebec residents is really the concern, but obviously, are we getting 100% back, and what's our overall number that actually contributes to operations of the hospital?
Sure. So maybe I can give a bit more of an explanation on the Quebec or interprovincial billing for patients. First and foremost, it doesn't matter where you come or who you are, we will take care of you if you come to our hospital. So that's the first and foremost. But would you want to talk about the finances a little bit? Prior to the pandemic, HGMH relied very heavily on the revenue stream that came from Quebec residents who did come to receive service at the hospital. So we were receiving approximately, at that time, prior to the pandemic, about $3.5 million from the province of Quebec to take care of the volume that would come. So it's based on volume. It's every patient that comes, and based on the service that they receive, then there's an amount that's provided, whether they're an emergency department patient, whether they're a clinic outpatient, or they're an inpatient. So it varies on the money that does return back to the hospital from the interprovincial billing. But since the pandemic, HGMH has seen a decline in the number or the volume of patients that are receiving care at the hospital. So that actually has significantly impacted our normal course of revenue stream to the tune of about $1.5 million that we were used to receiving from interprovincial patients that did come to see us at the hospital. So I guess the long-winded answer to your question is, is that Quebec patients, when they do come receive care here, it does help us financially. I would just say, from a medical perspective, there's not always an easy or reciprocal way to get patients back to a home hospital, should they require a higher level of care than we can provide in our hospital. So I would just caution that it's not always about the finance side of things, that yes, we certainly reap the benefits of having Quebec patients visit us at HGMH. There are challenges at times, not often, but at times, on the clinical side, to be able to repatriate back to the home province.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from members of council? Seeing none, thank you very much for your presentation today, and we look forward to seeing your strategic plan in the coming months.
Absolutely.
It'll be exciting.
Thanks very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to staff reports, administrative department, draft strategic plan and priorities 2023-2026, Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Williams, that the council of the township of North Glengarry receives Staff Report AD 2023-03, and that the council of the township of North Glengarry approves the draft strategic plan and priorities for 2023 to 2026 as presented.
Thank you, councillor. Madam CEO.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as presented to the committee of the whole last week, you have before you our strategic plan as a result of the two days that we spent together in Cornwall, and also some work that senior management team put together for council. There are minor changes to what you saw. I believe there was the addition of the mayor/CAO message, and then we did make the changes that were suggested around the speed addition, and a couple of other small changes were made as well. But in whole, it is exactly what you had seen last week, and we are issuing a press release, hopefully, if it's approved this evening, and so we'll be putting it on the website and have the public certainly be able to view it. The one thing I did want to note is that with all the action plans, there will be considerable public consultation to go with each of them, so please look forward in the future to those, you know, communications going out to the public when we look to, for instance, the recreation master plan as a first sort of public consultation that will more than likely be actioned.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? Councillor Massey.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just as our discussion of last week, just regarding the French factor, it will be translated in French to accommodate our French speaking.
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Mayor, absolutely. Councillor Massey, we will do so. It just takes time to get the translation, so we'll have staff working on it, and we'll have it up in no time yet.
So what's your anticipated timeline for the press release?
We have it going. The communications officer has drafted it. Council has a copy, so if everything goes well tonight, is approved, it'll go out this evening.
Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, well done, Sarah and staff. I think we've got something we're really going to be able to work with, and I'm happy to hear that there's going to be a public consultation associated with the action items. I think it's important that the public get to know exactly what our plan is and be able to contribute to the contents of it, so I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and I think we discussed today that you were going to put some, two pages up in pretty much every place in the municipality.
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Mayor. So Jenna, if you go back a couple of slides, to, one more, if you don't mind, thank you. So there will be a mix between this slide here with the, or page in the plan, where we have our mission and vision statements, which I think are an excellent, you know, direction for the municipality, as well as the core fundamental, you know, feelings we have about North Glengarry as a whole. And then if you go to the next page, we're going to put the two pages together so that it'll be a poster, and what we're going to do is post it in all the public places. So we really feel like this should be something that when someone comes in, say, the township office, into the recreation centers, that people will know that this is our foundation, this is our growth plan for North Glengarry, this is what we'll be working on, and we'll be updating as well to the public and council on how we're going forward. So that's what the plan is, go forward.
Great, thank you. Any further questions or comments this time? I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Thank you, Sarah. Moving on to the Treasury Department, 2023 Tax Rate Bylaw, Councillor Man.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Massey, that the council of the township of North Glengarry adopts bylaw 11-2023, being a bylaw to adopt tax rates for the year 2023, and that bylaw 1123 be read a first, second, and third time and enacted in open council this 27th day of March 2023.
Thank you, councillor. Welcome, Kim.
Good evening, council. The 2023 operating capital budgets were approved on January 27, which required a $6,523,845 worth of taxes to be raised. Annually, a tax rate bylaw is required to authorize tax rates, as well as education and county set rates. Of the total tax rate this year, 44.7% will be set for the county, 15.6 is for the education portion, and 39.7 of the dollars will be the municipal portion. Excuse me. Section 308 of the Municipal Act requires that municipal council establish tax ratios by passing a bylaw. Because we are lower tier, the county sets those tax ratios. The county has also set their rates for 2023, which equate to a 3.72% increase over last year, and the education rates remain the same as 2022 levels. Of that, so the council approved 2.29 for the municipal portion, the county approved 3.72, education remains, sorry, education rates remained unchanged, so the average overall tax rate increase equates to 2.09 over all the tax classes. According to Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund, the average assessment for North Glengarry for a residence is 244,915, which would result in just over $83 increase in total taxes paid by someone who has a residence. Just wanted to counsel to be aware, we did change the tax due dates, or usually the last day of the month. It's caused some grief in the past when July 31 falls on a Friday, and then we have the long weekend on the Monday, and we don't get to finalize all the deposits until like Tuesday or Wednesday. So for September, we're actually setting a due date of a Thursday, which is the 28th of September, because we have the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation, which happens on a Saturday, so the Monday will be a banking holiday. So that has changed. So that gives us the opportunity that taxes due on Thursday, we have So that gives us the opportunity that taxes due on Thursday, we have electronic payments, say, on the 28th, but we don't get notified till the 29th, but then it doesn't upset us with the the banking holiday. So this bylaw is being presented to approve the overall tax rates that are required for the final tax billings.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Moving on to Planning, Building, and Bylaw Enforcement Department, Administrative Monetary Penalties, councillor Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move by myself, seconded by councillor Manley, that the council of the township of North Glengarry receives Staff Report number BP-2023-06, and that the council of the township of North Glengarry approves the implementation of the Administrative Monetary Penalties, AMPs, program.
Thank you. Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is basically just to get the official resolution from council advising us to move forward on the AMPs program. We already have started working on a draft bylaw, so it'll be like, there's going to be one new bylaw created for AMPs, and then we're just going to attach all of our, all of our bylaw number, and all of our fines will be all together. So we're keeping everything that we have right now, exactly as it is, we're just creating a new bylaw for for AMPs. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion is carried, none opposed. Zoning Bylaw Amendment Number Z01-2023, councillor Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Move by myself, seconded by councillor Cadell, that the council of the township of North Glengarry adopts zoning bylaw number Z01-2023, and that the bylaw Z01-2023 be read first, second, third time, and enacted in open council this 27th day of March 2023.
Thank you, councillor Martin. Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the owner for that bylaw, just a quick wrap up, was Andy Schur, bylaw Z01-2023, address is 1535 Dalkeith Road. The purpose was to rezone the property from AG 58 to AG 221, to permit the secondary dwelling, and to keep the existing use of agricultural, commercial tourism that currently exists on the property. So that's the the image that we had done. So for now, the dwelling is proposed to be in that little gazebo there at the back. So we have received no further comments from any members of the public or any agencies. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Jacob. Questions or comments? Call the question, all those in favor? Motion is carried, none opposed. Zoning Bylaw Amendment Number Z02-2023, deputy mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move by myself, seconded by councillor Manley, that the council of the township of North Glengarry adopts zoning bylaw number Z02-2023, and that bylaw Z02-2023 be read a first, second, third time and enacted in open council this 27th day of March 2023.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Z02-2023, the owner is Monsieur Benoit Henri. The location, 1654 County Road 30, so it's just heading south of Donvegan. So the purpose for this application was to rezone the property from RH to RH special exception four, to permit a secondary dwelling, and it was also to seek relief from the interior yard setback from the required three meters to the proposed 1.8, and from the rear yard from the required eight to the proposed 1.8. So the new, oh, yeah, there you go. So that's the proposed site plan, so the new dwelling will be in a new garage that's going to replace the existing garage on the northwest of the property. We have received no further comments from any members of the public or any agency. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Jacob. Questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jacob, what is that on the bottom left hand?
That's the septic system.
Oh, that's what that is.
Yeah, so that's exactly the example I was saying to Mr. Mayor earlier. So you see, there's a, there's a line that's going to a little septic tank for the new proposed dwelling, there's another existing tank, so they're going to keep that same septic system for both dwellings.
Obviously, there's capacity, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
It's a completely new system? The whole thing? Oh, there you go. We have.
Never mind what you said before.
Yeah, no, it's, it's one system, but the system will be new. They're renewing the system.
Okay.
Thanks, councillor Madden. Good thing you're here.
Any further questions or comments?
Good thing you're here. Good thing you're here.
Your mic's still on. We'll review tomorrow what you said.
I can say it again if you want.
Yeah, yeah.
I know it's on.
All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. And subdivision application, zoning bylaw amendment number Z21-2022, councillor Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move by myself, seconded by councillor Martin, that the council of the township of North Glengarry adopts zoning bylaw number Z21-2022, and that the bylaw Z21-2022 be read a first, second, and third time, and enacted in open council this 27th day of March 2023.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So zoning bylaw Z21-2022, that's actually the zoning bylaw for the Trillium Landing Subdivision. The owner is Alcor Homes. The location, as you know, it's on the corner of McDougall and Main Street. So this is to, Peter came here to do the presentation, so this is, that, that report, there's another one also for the conditions. This report is only for the zoning change for the property. So we're proposing to change the zoning from R2 to R3-5. So R3-5 is to permit the row housing dwelling, and the dash five is really for the following acknowledgement in the interior side, exterior and interior, sorry. So exterior side yard of 7.5 only for the lots abutting on McDougall Street, and the interior side yard setback deficiency from three to two only between the townhomes itself. So we're not getting closer to any residential properties with the building, as mentioned by Peter at the presentation. And also acknowledged a lot deficiency from the maximum 35 to the proposed 41%. So this is just a quick wrap up of the development review process for subdivision, and this is new for for North Glengarry. So the two sections I've highlighted is what we're doing this evening. So basically, we're passing the zoning bylaw right now, so this could have been a condition, but in this case, we passed it before just to make sure the subdivision could go ahead. And then recommendations that we're going to do just after. Everything's going to be sent to the counties for the official decision by SDG regarding the subdivision, so it's most likely going to pass. There's going to be an appeal period for anybody to appeal the decision of passing the subdivision, and after that, the owner will have three years to submit all the documents, all the conditions that are going to be listed, they're going to have three years to do so. Once this is done, they can start building roads and homes.
So the decision by SDG will be at our next county council meeting?
It's just after, my next report is for.
When you're saying the decision by SDG, that'll be at our, like, in the coming next month?
Nope, this is, it's going to be done by SDG at the county council. Okay, I'm assuming, yes.
Yeah, yeah. And the appeal period is how long?
Oh, good question. I think it's 60 days, but I'll confirm, I'm not.
And after that, he's free to start building.
Yeah, well, he's, like, after the appeal period, he can officially start submitting all the documents, so he'll need, like, the detailed design, the ECA. So, yeah, after that, he's good to go, yes. And as soon as he has submitted all the documents, he can start building, so there's a little wait there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments?
Anything you want to add, Mike?
All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Okay, moving on to C5 subdivision application number 01NGS 2022. Councillor Cadell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move by myself, and seconded by deputy mayor Williams, that the council of the township of North Glengarry supports Plan of Subdivision Application Number 01NGS 2022, by way of a resolution based on the conditions of approval described in Schedule A of the action request dated February 27th, 2023, and that these conditions be forwarded to the United Counties of SDG and the applicant, representing the township's formal comments on proposal.
Okay, thank you, councillor. Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is the report for the conditions for the subdivision. So as you know, that's the preliminary design for the subdivision. It consists of 12 blocks, block one being for, for the pond, for the retaining pond, and the 11 other blocks. The blocks are not exactly in line with the phases, so that's not like, it's not 11 phases, I think it's seven phases, but the blocks themselves are where the buildings are, so there's going to be 43 units total. All the end ones will have secondary dwellings in the basement or vice versa. I have discussed with the designer, they're currently working on figuring out how they design the, the end units for the secondary homes. So this is, this is what, what they're working on right now. There's still room for changes if, like, for servicing and whatnot, but right now, that's their final draft design that they're going to submit to the counties. The property is 4.5 acres, and just, I'm not going to go through the whole, to the whole, to the entire conditions, but basically, these what, this is what the conditions are right now. So Peter Young drafted them, they're the typical conditions that you would see for a subdivision on municipal servicing. So you've got everything from the subdivision agreement with the township, the subdivision to be registered on the property, the owner will have to satisfy all terms, conditions, financial, everything. The easements are going to, are going to have to be registered for utility and drainage, dedication of blocks or easements, the rezoning, which we already did, all the road allowance and naming, so council will have input on that as well. The owner agreed writing to reimburse the township for any other study that we require. The owner shall submit a revised plan if required. Final approval from the counties, so once they submit their document, the counties have to give their, their final go ahead also. Submit all the details, design, environmental compliance by MOE, lock rating, drainage, composite utilities for, like, gas, telephone, hydro, lighting plan, phasing plan, servicing easements, water and sanitary capacity from the township, and additional charges as may be applicable. So these are all the conditions that they have to fulfill before starting to work on the roads and, and the houses.
So you actually decide to read them all?
Well, I can, no, I have a lot more. And, yeah, that's it, Mr. Mayor. So this is the, not that one, but what you, what you have in there is the exact wording that's going to be sent to the counties. So, yeah, I'm assuming that Peter's going to bring it at the next county council, not sure exactly when with timing, but that's what they need to move ahead with the subdivision. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, this is exciting, be the first one I get to pass in 16 years. I think the last one was the ETA subdivision, which was, predates me, so that's, it's pretty exciting. Any questions or comments? Councillor Madden.
Just one quick one, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jacob, just things like the lighting plan and everything else, it's, is it strictly to be reviewed by the building department, or does any of that come here?
Well, it'll actually go to the building department, to whoever's involved, like, for, for roads, it'll be with Tim, and if we need to hire someone to review. Most of it will be handled by, by SDG, though. It will not come to council for, so there will be, I believe there's another step where, before the counties will give their final go ahead, we will present all documents to make sure, pretty much like we did with the site plan for the hospital. So before they issue their final, council has another, another presentation to show exactly what's been, what's been presented. But, yeah, no, there's definitely more steps. Council will most likely only be involved at the end, so not at each step. So this will be by staff and mostly by SDG staff.
Perfect, thank you.
Great. Any further questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, it's, it's great seeing this being moved forward like this. I had just a question about things like greening the spaces and things like that, like, do we have any idea whether or not they're planning on planting trees, or anything like that, or are they going to be burying all of the electrical and all of that?
Yeah, everything will be underground, but for, like, grass and trees and stuff like that, they're not at this point yet, so.
I see.
So I'm assuming when we get, like, the, the final site plans and lighting and everything, we'll have a better idea of what's, of what's being proposed. And I'll definitely confirm with Peter, but I think we'll have, like, another type of public meeting where we present everything to council, make sure everything's in order.
Great, thank you. Okay, I'll ask one more time. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Okay, moving on, thank you, Jacob. Moving on to Fire Department Training Facility Rental, councillor Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move by myself, seconded by councillor Massey, that the council of the township of North Glengarry receives Staff Report number FD 2023-03, and that the council of the township of North Glengarry approves the rental of our facility to external stakeholders and outside fire departments through a cost recovery model.
Okay, thank you, councillor. Welcome, chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the same report that was brought forward to the committee of the whole, just in terms of moving to our next phase of opening up our training facility to outside fire departments. So this is what we're looking to council is to approve that process that we move to look at our, the recovery model that we've proposed in this report, so that's my report.
That's great. Questions or comments? I have a question, just because I wasn't here on, for the committee of the whole. Are we putting on, like, doing the training, or do they, their departments come in and do their own training?
Yeah, so we're looking at solely, it's solely going to be on a rental basis. In terms of that, we're not looking at becoming a regional training center.
Right.
That's where that would incorporate us being instructors. So this is solely us renting the, our facility for that purpose, so each outside department would have to have an outside learning contract through their college, or if they just want to conduct normal training, they could utilize every training prop that we have available. So it's solely on a rental basis for the props.
Perfect, thank you. Any further questions or comments? Councillor Madden.
Just one quick one, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I said the other day, great idea, super in favor of this. Just curious if there's been any interest expressed from any of the surrounding municipalities yet?
Yes, so we're currently looking at two days currently already for the month of May. The city of Cornwall's expressed some interest in coming out. They currently have a recruit class. So that's where we're actually going to be marketing this in the month of May, where we're going to be having hopefully some onsite visits for outside municipalities, come in, visit the site, see what training props we have available, and demonstrate that to even CAOs and councils from outside municipalities, and then we'll open it up to outside fire chiefs to come in and hopefully have some type of model moving forward. So we are trying to, you know, capture that, that opportunity with the, with the new certification process, so hopefully that will get a lot of the new recruit classes from every outside department, and hopefully our training facility will help out other municipalities that don't have the availability of those training props, so, yeah.
That's great. Councillor Cadell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would it be a single day training and then off to home, or would they be looking for local accommodations for a two-day?
Yes, so through you, Mr. Mayor, it all depends on which municipality that comes in. We're open to having that. We've never actually thought of that, of further municipalities coming forward, given that the fact that the interior fire college is closed, and there isn't many training facilities like ours around, so that is an opportunity. And there's always that, that room for growth. But we do have our rates that are for half-days, full-days, but yes, there is interest, and typically, it's going to be on weekends, most likely Saturdays, Sundays. We could see most likely full-time services wanting to come throughout the week, which we'll be able to accommodate that as well, so.
That's great. Any further, councillor Martin.
Would, would this facility be open to interprovincial too, like, for Quebec departments as well, or?
Through you, Mr.
Maybe even up from New York State, if there's any smaller departments coming up here.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, it is open. Our model is rental, so anybody who does want to rent it, and whenever we say outside agencies, that's, we've had expressed interest from even the interprovincial police to do some, some training, due to the fact that we have, it is a multi-level simulated, like a three-story apartment building or residence, so, as well as a tower, which we're hopefully going to be growing through that, so it is open. open to outside agencies for various different aspects, so.
Great. I'll ask one last time. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. None opposed. Public Works Department Award of Tender PW-2023-07, purchase of aggregate, Counsel Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Massey, that the council of the township of North Glengarry receives staff report number PW-2023-16, Award of Tender 2023-07, purchase of aggregate, and that the council of the township of North Glengarry authorizes the mayor and CAO clerk to enter into an agreement with AL Blair Construction Limited to purchase 30,000 metric tons of granular M aggregate for the sum of $416,700 plus HST. The overage for this work is to be covered by the approved 2023 roads capital budget.
Welcome, Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So unfortunately, the prices went up a lot more than we had suspected. It also looks like we were getting very good prices last year as well. So the bids for this year do seem to be all in line with each other, and unfortunately, this is just one of those items that's really difficult to forecast, just with all the changes in fuel prices, and a lot of it is increasing labor costs as well to the different companies. So, yeah, this is, represents a small, a small amount per kilometer for our gravel roads, but is a significant chunk of the roads budget.
Okay, thank you. I'm getting a little concerned about some of the overages, and also the snow budget, the gas budget. We know that's going to be blown out of the water. I think we may have to start looking. We're going to be getting some money at the end of the month for some of the buildings we've sold, and I think we may have to earmark some of that money for that, because I think I, this is my opinion, that we have to, we have to keep our roads up to standards, and I don't want to see us not put enough on there. But again, I'm just one vote, so. Any questions or comments from members of council? Counsel Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tim, I mentioned in the conversation a few months ago that maybe it was time for North Glengarry to look at gravel that is not as clean, like, you know, you mentioned some, some of the bitwood clay in it, so they would pack better and do a, offer a better long-term life for our roads. Is that anything in there?
Through you, Mr. Matt. Yeah, so there, we are investigating road stabilization options, which is where you're using a starch-like material to stabilize the material that you're putting down. It's done very commonly on mine sites and those type of roads. It can really lower the cost per kilometer for your roads, because you need to do a lot less maintenance on your gravel roads. You also get a lot less dust and a lot less, you know, potholing and issues like that. You essentially, you're turning your road into a really good base. It solidifies, kind of like concrete, and then you can actually go and put a base layer on top of that, and then asphalt if you ever decide to upgrade in the future. The, but we still really need to look into that. They've been used very successfully in other parts of the country, so there's companies out in Alberta and other provinces that we have been talking to, but we need to do more testing and make sure that we've got the right type of material so we can really actually stabilize it. It just looks like it's a practice that's never really been done in this part of the country, so it should be interesting, but we're not at a stage yet where we can go and do that.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead. Kim?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just to be clear, this overage in this particular tender is actually covered by the capital budget, so there is funding available because of the report that the Director of Public Works brought forward that we were going to concentrate on doing the roads in Glen Robertson. So there is some funds available. So this is covered by the capital budget that was approved by council. So this is great, like, we're good here. As far as your comment about snow plowing and the costs of hydro and gas and that, yes, it is a concern, and I'm carefully monitoring it, and council will be getting quarterly variance reports, so they know exactly where we're at.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On that note, do we have a number on a surplus for last year or anything like that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The auditors just left Friday, and they're still doing adjusting entries at this point. I do not have anything to comment at that, at this point. I'm sorry.
If your treasurer does.
I know. Any guesses?
Is it an S or a D? A surplus or a deficit?
At this point in time, I'm going to say it's probably a slight deficit, just because we were over budget by, like, over 200,000 in fuel.
Okay, so can't use a surplus if it isn't there. Okay, thank you.
We still have working reserves.
She's going to surprise us later. I like surprises. Any further questions or comments on the gravel budget? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. None opposed. Thank you, Tim. Okay, moving on to blue box transition and regional waste management group update, Counsel Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Manley, that the council of the township of North Glengarry receives a staff report PW-2023-07, Blue Box Transition and Regional Waste Management Group update, and that the council of the township of North Glengarry agrees to opt out of the providing administration services to Circular Materials Ontario during the transition period of January 1, 2025, to December 31, 2025, and report this to the Regional Waste Management Group.
I'll make that correction. So it's 2023. Okay, Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is a follow-up on the report that was taken to committee of the whole. So essentially, it provided an update to the, how the blue box transition is going from a high level, and I won't go through that in detail now. And the, and as a result of that, we're recommending to opt out of providing administration services to Circular Materials Ontario when transition takes place. This is a decision that can be reversed as we get closer to transition. However, we want to report to the Regional Waste Management Group so we can get a sense of where all the municipalities are and be able to move together as a group, as it gives us greater negotiating power.
Okay. It's good that we're not the first to go, so it's good that we'll be able to see what others are doing. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. None opposed. Okay, items under the consent agenda, Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Martin, that the council of the township of North Glengarry receives the items from the consent agenda for information purposes only.
Deputy Mayor, any questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. None opposed. No new business, notice of motion, next regular public meeting of council is Tuesday, April 8, 2023, 6:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. Question period. No question, Ken? Okay. Rob? Yeah, you're good. Okay. I like being able to ask everybody. No closed session business this evening, confirming bylaw, Counsel Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Martin, that the council of the township of North Glengarry receives bylaw 12-2023, and that the council of the township of North Glengarry adopts bylaw 12-2023 being a bylaw to adopt, confirm, and ratify matters dealt with by resolution, and that bylaw 12-2023 be read a first, second, third time, and enacted in open council this 27th day of March 2023.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. None opposed. Adjournment, Counsel Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Kaddell, there be no further business to discuss. The meeting was adjourned at 5:50 p.m.
All those in favor? Motion is carried. All right, thank you, everyone. It's 6:50. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Thank you to anyone watching the meeting from home, and have a great week. Thank you.